Call the regular council meeting for the Corporation of the Town of Cobalt to be ordered on May 28, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Disclosure of community interest in General Lake Derrero. Councilor Starchuk?
Yes, I have items 7.3 and 8.4 just to do with the transit shelter.
Mail. Okay, three public meetings or none, four deputations, delegations. Our first delegation is David Bridges, Cobalt Art Heritage, Cobalt a Mining Town, and the Canadian Imagination. David.
Thank you. Thank you. Everyone, did you see the book? You see the book? No. Cobalt Heritage in the Spotlight. Evening Mayor, Council, Town Staff, Media, and Guests. This is a follow-up to a previous presentation introducing the Michael Cobalt of Mining Town and the Canadian Imagination Exhibition I did last year that I visited. And, you know, finally, Canada's forgotten mining town painting paradise has been discovered. And you've held, most of you have held in your hands the most beautiful book published on the history of Cobalt ever. Dozens of books have been written on the city of Cobalt's storied glory days. And historian Doug Baldwin, who some of us know, has written over forty books on Cobalt. But this is the most illustrious of them all. Cobalt to Mining Town and the Canadian Imagination book was, as Catherine Mastin noted, Canadian art historian, says about her three-year research, not just about the artists and their legacies, but about the history of the Canadian mining industry, economics, politics, and the environment. I haven't read the whole thing, but I find it the most balanced book ever I've written on Cobalt. Visually stunning. The roots of this story began a decade ago in 2014, when Vivian Highlands and I started to envision plaques to the Group of Seven women artists from Toronto and local artists along with a brochure and a walking tour. Vivian previously had helped Group of Seven researchers Jim and Sue Waddington find locations when they came to Cobalt for their book in the footsteps of the Group of Seven. They traveled across Canada photographing locations of the Group of Seven and then put the paintings beside them. With support from the late Nicole Gerth and Tom Smithing Shores, Jim and Sue in 2015 did two lectures on Franklin Carmichael at the Mezzanine Art Gallery, Austin Theatre, and for the Tom Smithing Art Gallery in the Chamber Room, Tom Smithing Shores. Vivian's sudden death in 2017 stalled that project until I contacted Anne-Marie Laurentier, Economic Development Officer at Tom Smithing Shores, and told her that the hundredth anniversary of the Group of Seven's first exhibition in Toronto was coming up in 2020, and it'd be good to have some plaques honoring the two group members, the painted Cobalt. She got funding for an exhibition of Group of Seven paintings at the Tom Smithing Art Gallery, plus five plaques, entries, and a brochure. Four are in Cobalt Coleman and one is in Tamagoyne. The project only applied to the Group of Seven artists, so I fundraised to add more of what Vivian and I imagined. So in 2021, six plaques were installed to the Cobalt Artist Colony, one of the oldest artist colonies in Canada. Sir Frederick Banting, a friend of AY Jackson, local artist Laura Landers, George Cassidy, and the first woman artist to travel north after World War I, Yvonne McKay Houser, and Marion Vanderduson from North Bay, who painted the train station and the train coming. Cobalt Coleman has, in and near its downtown core, the finest art heritage plaques of any community in Northern Ontario. The silver well below ground is gone, but the wealth above ground still shines with infinite luster at the end of a painter's brush. So we have been gifted with a very deep artistic tradition of locals and other creatives coming to Cobalt, being inspired and leaving their legacies. In conclusion, I want to quote the acknowledgement page and share a future vision of how we can tell the whole story of showcasing Cobalt through the eyes of artists. The Cobalt poet David Bridges has been a constant companion on this project, providing introductions, tours of the art sites, and ongoing communications from Cobalt of the most recent cultural initiatives. Phase one has splendidly recorded artists painting up until the Second World War. Phase two story is waiting to be organized and told. Oh, I have lobbied McMichael Art Gallery executives at two VIP events in Ottawa and their headquarters in Kleinburg, and I will continue to promote this cultural history project to keep the momentum going. It takes two to three years to organize events like this, so we're not gonna have it overnight, but I'm definitely going to be seeing them again. Phase two will include artists up until today, with many still living, who can receive some recognition for keeping Cobalt's art heritage legacy alive. All the artists in the book were dead, of course, because of the Second World War. But the second phase will certainly have some local artists and other artists in Northern Ontario who are definitely alive. And planned is a week-long art heritage festival that will consist of the largest collection of paintings of any mining community in Canada. Right now, I estimate we have at least a hundred paintings already in Cobalt. TAG has thirty-two paintings of Cobalt in their permanent collection, so we're almost halfway there. A disappointment was TAG was unable to secure the McMichael Cobalt exhibition due to technical issues and space size. And we're determined to rectify that for phase two. The boom days are over, but the bloom days just begun. I hope to invite Catherine Mastin to visit Cobalt again for the festival. In her research, she followed in the footsteps of her grandfather Franklin Carmichael, who came to Cobalt in 1930. Now, I have one request, a council. A letter of appreciation be sent to Catherine Mastin for her dedicated effort to share this fine collection of stories, paintings, and photographs with us and others. And if you approve, I have her mailing address I can give Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, David.
Any questions?
That's good news, thank you.
It's a beautiful book.
And I would.
You really want the book back, huh?
No, actually, I'm gonna donate this copy to the Town of Cobalt.
Thank you very much, David.
And I imagine this will be a great conversation piece when visiting delegates come to Cobalt. Show that in their hands, show them what this town's all about.
Nice job.
Thank you very much, and all your efforts are always appreciated.
Now, would Steve write the letter of appreciation to Catherine?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, here's her address.
Hey, second delegation is the Bunker Military Museum, 24 Prospect Avenue.
One more question?
Oh, go right ahead. And Mike Harrison is gonna speak to us.
Everybody here with me? Commander, Mayor, and Councillors. I represent, I'm the chairman of the board of the Bunker Military Museum. And the Bunker Military Museum has heard. I'm sure that the Cobalt Council is concerned with charitable organizations occupying their buildings. The museum board would like to inform council of the value of the Bunker presence in Cobalt. Being the only military museum in the area, we are always trying to help people remember the sacrifices so many of our local people have made in the military. It's important also to remember all the service personnel who have their names on the local cenotaphs as they die fighting for us. And we often forget that we are their future. As well, Cobalt has the honor of being designated as Parks Canada's National Historic Site, and our museums are historic. We continue to try and improve the museum and bring in more people to remember. The museum has always had a significant visitorship, especially in the summer, bringing up to twelve hundred visitors a year. We also employ two or three summer students and one permanent part-time employee. The bunker has taken part in various local events, and our functioning bring gun carrier has always been a big hit. In February 2015, the municipality of Cobalt was honored by a joint venture between the Bunker Military Museum and the regiment of the Department of National Defense, the Alberta Reserve Regiment, when the Freedom of the City Ceremony was hosted by the museum in coordination with the regiment. The museum has had a number of local school classes attended each year, and we have had students from faraway and smooth rock halls, including a fourth-year university history class that the professor uses our history for their final exam. Bunker has also put on theater productions commemorating the people who have served our country in war. We're planning the eightieth anniversary of NATO. We have a display in the museum if anybody's interested in seeing it. The museum has over seven thousand artifacts based on a collection that was the lifetime work of a past Cobalt resident, Jimmy Jones. Military museum is very difficult to license and maintain because of the types of articles on display. Even though the weapons are all rendered non-functional by the RCMP, it is still a chore to keep up the paperwork to maintain our collection, meet all legal museum requirements. We have a lease for the town now until 2026, and it's extendable every five years. At the present, we cost the town nothing. We struggle to cover our own costs. We exist by donations and applying for government grants. And any additional expense would cause the museum to close, and this would not be an easy task and would be a financial burden on the municipality because of the regulations regarding disposal of the artifacts in the closed museum. Wish to thank you for your consideration, and we hope this information helps the council understand our place in Cobalt and Northern Ontario. Just to clarify, Freedom of the City, I don't know whether some of you know what it is, but Freedom of City is a historic ceremony dating back centuries to when cities were surrounded by walls and gates that were barred and entry was guarded to friends and foe. Permission had to be granted for anyone to enter. The ceremony is granted to a military entity to show a long and happy relationship with the municipality. The bunker has total responsibility in our building, in the apartment we have, with no municipal assistance for following in the leasing. We pay for the heat, hydro, insurance, security, water. So that's my presentation. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Five, adoption of meeting agenda, draft motion, be it resolved, the council approve the agenda of the regular meeting dated May 28, 2024 as presented. Counselor Cooper, Counselor Anderson, any discussion on the agenda? All in favor? Harry. Adoption of previous council minutes, draft motion, be it resolved, the council approve the following minutes as presented. Regular meeting of council, April 20, 2024. Special meeting of council, May 2, 2024. Special meeting of council, May 14, 2024. Need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Starchuk? Counselor Anderson, any discussion on those minutes or errors, omissions? Counselor Cooper?
My bad, I read wrong. All good.
All in favor? Carrie.
Thanks, Mike.
Seven, staff reports, draft motion, be it resolved, the council accept the staff reports as presented. Public Works, May 2024. Any clarification required? Cobalt Public Library Minutes, March 24, 2024. Clarification required? Counselor Starchuk?
Can I ask a question to Counselor Hughes about dog tags?
Yeah.
I don't understand what this. Number twelve.
All right. All right. The library is wanting to discuss percentages of the dog tag money that we collect, that's where the ones collecting it. Right now, it's like a ten percent, so it's not even really worth our time to do it. So whatever, we want to negotiate that deal. We have to come up to council.
Yep. And how should I come to council?
Yeah. Okay, no problem.
Seven point three, staff report, 2024-05-28-01, Transit Shelter, Prospect Avenue. Any clarification?
You want to speak on that?
Yeah.
Currently, where the shelter is up on Prospect Avenue. It's adjacent to an individual's property, but the shelter has been used, unfortunately, a lot for some drug activity, unfortunately. There have been cases of individuals in there and other individuals wanting to take the bus, a little bit concerned to walk in there because there's also drug paraphernalia that has been left in there. So it being adjacent to a property, of course, other items may come out of that shelter itself and go into someone else's property, so that's why the request was made to move it down approximately fifty feet west.
You declared.
Yeah.
Hey, Counselor Anderson, okay, this has been an ongoing concern for quite a while. In parts, the first complaints were mainly about the exhaust from the buses being pulled by and sitting there waiting, you know, waiting for their time because it is stop number one. And the complaints weren't made officially to the Transit Board or anything like that. Because we never got anything that far through. But I do sympathize. There's medical reasons for moving it and as well to get the drug use as far away as possible because there's a small child in that house. So my first thought, what, month ago? And I said to Steve when it came up again, move the damn shelter somewhere else, get it out of there. But the stop can be moved up the street, that fifty feet, no problem at all. Actually, that gets the bus pulling off the road, except when the church is using that pull-off area. That was public property, but but as well with the shelter, since that bus stop is serving a very large neighborhood, so there will be people wanting to use, you know, should be using the shelter, so if we move the shelter up to the new built stop position, then, you know, for the most part, maybe not always, but for the most part, we can have, you know, the the actual people waiting for transit can get to use it and get out of the cold or the rain or whatever, so I think that would be the best.
Counselor Cooper?
Do we have an estimated cost to move this? Like, do we have to put a concrete slab in or?
That's what I was gonna bring to council there, is I talked to our Public Works, they could do it in-house and then move the shelter. We own the shelter. So we would bring it there. If it is an issue of using the shelter itself as an area of reuse, I talked to Mitch McCrank from Transit. Transit stop itself and just bring the pole there, if, like that's worst-case scenario.
I'd like to see us be able to do it as cheap as possible because it's not in the budget to start with. And by moving it, we're just moving the problem, right? Is there anything else we can do to deviate this problem? The drug use, or, well, the drug use, you're never gonna get rid of.
Yeah. And ask the OPP to do more patrols through there.
Actually, the OPP was there last week.
Yeah. The owner of the house has contacted the OPP several times. He's got photographs, video, you know.
I don't have a problem with moving shelters, as long as we're not gonna pan through the laws to do it.
It has to just be the cost of the concrete.
Yeah.
If we're doing it in-house, not farming it out, yeah. Four bucks a bag.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, certainly we'll get rid of the one issue of the noise and the exhaust fumes kind of into the house, especially with summer here. The drug use maybe not right away, but if it comes down to it, we'll take the shelter away, like Steve says, just stick a pole there, that'll lessen biting to do your drugs.
Or maybe at that point, you could remove the wall shelters but still have the roof, so it's still dry but not as good.
Yeah, it's not fair to the residents to do utilize that stop. There is a fair bit of traffic at that stop, first thing in the morning. So. Okay?
I'm gonna agree on that.
Okay, seven point four, staff report, 2024-05-28-02. Yeah, bring them back. Forget to get them out, forget to bring them back. Okay, we'll start back from the beginning. Seven point four, staff report, 2024-05-28-02, 2022-4-F550. Any clarification?
Your worship may speak on this?
Yeah.
Initially, in the budget was a 2018 F-550 with seventy-eight thousand kilometers on it. It has sold. But we have come across, staff reached out to a number of dealerships, and we came across this 2022 F-550 with only eighteen thousand five hundred clicks on it. We were looking, it'd be for five years, five and a half years, sorry, biweekly. What we put previously in the budget, this would be just, well, it would be fifty dollars a month, fifty-three dollars a month extra on it, but we would look at other cost savings to offset it. The plus on this one is the warranty and the low mileage, and also with the aluminum box on it. So there are a lot more pluses, and then it's a multi-vehicle, like we spoke earlier during budget time for it as well. So this is the push we would like to go and get council's blessing to move ahead with.
Good question, yeah, the other one was just a flatbed, right? So this is quite an upgrade with the aluminum box.
The other one was also with a box.
Oh, it was a complete box?
Yeah.
Okay.
They didn't add a plow with it as well, though, right?
I think just the attachment at the front. Yeah, the harness itself, but this here, like I said, with the low mileage, eighteen thousand five hundred clicks, brand new, so. And it'd be a multipurpose vehicle, and throughout the years, we could have additions put onto it for more useful across the municipality. It's.
Okay, seven point five, staff report, 2024-05-28-03, Bylaw 2024-18, Beaming Bylaw, 34 Ferland Avenue. Any clarification required? Okay. And seven point six, staff report, 2024-05-28-04, Bylaw 2024-21, Borrowing Municipal Line of Credit. This is something we do annually.
Yeah, your worship, we did this actually earlier this year, but our new CIBC representative has requested that the town include two additional points within the bylaw, so what we do is we send that bylaw that we put earlier this year and put in the two points for the new bylaw. It's a technicality on this, but it's a request of the bank.
Any clarification questions? Okay, I need a mover and, we move it a second there? No, mover and a second. Counselor Hunter and Counselor Hughes. Okay, any further clarification on any of the reports?
Quick one, yeah. What kind of time do we have on this truck? We don't want this thing to be sold out from under us.
Well, it's a council's blessing, there'll be a phone call.
When do we do that? All right, thank you.
All in favor? Harry. Items for council consideration. Eight point one, service level review, draft motion, be it resolved, the council directs staff to proceed with a service level review. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Anderson, Counselor Starchuk, any discussion? I guess something that's, we definitely desperately need in order to save costs where we can.
Final, we'll have input on this as well once the.
Yes, this is only the beginning. Yeah. Okay, all in favor? Carrie. Eight point two, St. Catherine City Council, Letter of Support, Provincial Regulations Needed to Restrict Keeping of Non-Native Exotic Wild Animals. Draft motion, be it resolved, the council supports resolution from St. Catherine City Council and petitions the provincial government to implement provincial regulations to restrict possession, breeding, and use of non-native exotic wild animals and licensed zoos in order to guarantee the fair and consistent application of policy throughout Ontario for the safety of Ontario's citizens and non-native exotic wild animal population. And further, that a copy of this resolution be able to be forwarded to the Premier of Ontario, Ontario Solicitor General, Ontario Minister for Natural Resources and Forestry, MPP John Vantag, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, AMO, the Association of Municipal Managers, Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario, AMCTO, and the Municipal Law Enforcement Officers Association, MLEO. Need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Starchuk and Counselor Wilcox, any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Harry. Eight point three, Corporation of Art, Almwick, Almond, Letter of Support, Municipal Freedom of Information Protection of Privacy Act. Draft motion, be it resolved, the council supports a resolution from the Corporation of the Township of Almwick, Almond, and recommends that the Ministry of Public Business and Service Delivery review the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act and to consider the recommendation as outlined by the Association of Municipal Managers, Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario, within their submission, looking ahead, a proactive submission to modernize the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. And further, that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to AMCTO's advocacy team and the Minister of Public and Business Service Delivery. A mover and a seconder? Counselor Hughes and Counselor Starchuk, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Eight point four, Transit Bus Move Shelter. This is related to the staff report.
Should do a TV from there.
Draft motion, where as council received staff report, 2024-05-28-01, was a recommendation to move the Transit Shelter on Prospect Avenue. Therefore, be it resolved, the council directs staff to move the Transit Stop with the shelter to the proposed location on Prospect Avenue. Need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Anderson and Counselor Hughes, any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor? Carrie, you wanna bring him back in?
We should just get earmuffs.
Get them with the tunes, like, turn them on.
Yeah.
Horse whiners. Just a black.
You're getting your steps in.
You know, we did. Eight point five twenty twenty two Ford F five fifty as related to staff report twenty twenty four oh five twenty eight oh two. Draft motion whereas council received staff report twenty twenty four oh five twenty eight oh two with the recommendation to purchase a twenty twenty two Ford F five fifty. Therefore, be it resolved that council directs staff to proceed with the purchase of the twenty twenty two Ford F five fifty. A mover and a second there. Counselor Hunter, Counselor Hughes, discussion? And this is only an increase of fifty three a month to the budget?
Yeah, fifty three dollars.
Okay. Taxes included, everything?
Yeah, no, that's with taxes.
Okay, all in favor? Harry. Eight point six Mayor adds a procedural bylaw ad hoc committee. Draft motion whereas the December twentieth twenty twenty two council meeting and ad hoc committee of council was formed to review the procedural bylaw with a deadline to complete the review by December thirty first twenty twenty three. And whereas Counselor Wilcox, Counselor Cooper, Mayor Gibson, Peggy Young Lovelace, and one staff member were appointed to the committee. And whereas the deadline for the committee to complete the review has passed, therefore be it resolved that the committee provide the clerk with all meeting minutes. Need a mover and a second there. Counselor Anderson, Counselor Starcheck, any discussion?
How how many meetings were actually held and are we gonna now appoint like a new group to finish up?
Um, I don't know. No minutes were provided?
They were given to to Steve way back. And then the last one was, uh, Dale was at the meeting and she took the minute.
That was the only one I do recall for the minutes that happened.
No, I had given you a copy of the minutes from when we did one, I think it was back between Christmas and New Year's right after that was. I can look them up, I probably still have them.
And yes, we will be, um, all farming as it's many.
I think we recommended at one of the meetings a few months back that we just adopt missing shores. This was well written. It never went anywhere from there.
When the new committee takes it on, they can review that and make that recommendation as well. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Harry. Items for council information nine point one. DSAF twenty twenty four Q one board report. Nine point two Cobalt Constructed Wetlands twenty twenty three annual report. Nine point three Counselor Anderson Cobalt Historical Society update.
This. Okay, thanks. I don't, I I think it's been a long time since I've reported on what's been going on there. I just want to say that the group on that board, uh, are very dedicated Cobalters, even if they're not all living in Cobalt. Many of them aren't. Um, they work very, very hard. Um, they're excellent researchers and that's what you want out of a historical group is to be excellent in research. The, in the last year, uh, I knew upgraded, uh, website has come out and, uh, it is chock full of anything and everything you'd want to learn about Cobalt and pictures and it seems like almost every meeting someone is coming up with a new idea to put in there and uh, someone from town has a collection of like old classroom pictures from the schools every year. And many of them identified, so that's being donated over. They're already, they're already just to put in so that there'll be another thing that's being added into the website so that locals and visitors, former residents can go on and maybe find their moms and dads and stuff like that. So that, you know, that's just a few of the things that that come up all the time. Right now, the big, the big fundraising for them is, um, along with the museum in Halleberry, there's a lot of the, quite a few of the Hallebury, Halleburyan newspapers from way back when there and those old newspapers, you know, they're a hundred years old. You don't want to touch and move. So, uh, what they're doing is now in cooperation with the Halleberry Museum, fundraising to digitize all of those and then they'll be available all around on our website and Halleberry, Halleberries and others, so. They, they've got, they need twenty thousand and most of that twenty thousand is for the big digitizer machine. And once one of the groups owns that, that opens up a lot. There's an awful lot sitting up in our library that needs digitizing. Yes. Will you will be remembered.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Can you read?
Wait till that discussion.
Yeah. Oh, okay, sorry.
Uh, what else is going on? Um, oh, we saw the copy of the, the new McMichael book last night. Uh, they were given three as well. The Calder Trail. The Calder Trail is in progress. Uh, Demora was supposed to be open there today with Reiner. That trail uh, starts at the McKinley and goes over through the woods over to the railroad tracks where it goes goes by, um, the Little Silvervein. That and they knew there was trail there and they always wanted to open it up and make it just another hiking trail for people. But in doing that, they they discovered that that is the original road from the edge of Cobalt to the Curlic Mines. So they're following, you know, uh, a very original road. Uh, it's called Calder Trail because, uh, John Calder, he was from Toronto. Uh, all his friends called him Cobalt John because he loved it up here so much. Uh, he was up here many times in the summers and in the shoulder seasons and everything and he's established, um, a, a fund and out of that fund, we've, we've been given five thousand dollars for the construction of the trail. So we'll be making it in that and at this point already, uh, Reiner Malky has most of the signs, about half the signs, uh, done and produced, ready to open the trail as well. He's, they researched the signs. Uh, if you really kept a close eye in town, you would find that some of our historical signs come down because they've researched and researched and said, that's not accurate. The one that was sitting down for the hospital just down near the corner. That one was removed because it was inaccurate and now it will be going back up soon. As well, uh, where's her name? Very, uh, Annie, so as a memorial to Annie Saunders, who was, uh, one of our very early nurses during the typhoid period and, uh, she has just been awarded the award, the Order of the North. So that sign will not only top up the hospital, but but it will certainly acknowledge her too. So other signs have come up and down. Uh, there's been damage this year to the trail. And these once again are the people that not only do the research, but they go out and they're out there in the field, um, getting things fixed. At the Colonial Lattice, uh, the door was, the door was broken. Well, they tried to break into it and quite get there, but they, uh, they flipped over the OR card again and then grabbed one of the, um, rails and tried to pry it open. Nico has paid for the, uh, the cost to fix the, uh, the door again. And then they'll be going out, getting the the cart set up and everything before the Colonial opens for the season. So there's all sorts of things. Um, they're constantly updating trail maps with new, you know, with new signs and stuff like that and, uh, highlighting, uh, the newest stuff. And, uh, they're now going to, they've got another trail guide that's ready to be published and they're approaching bed north of the funding on that. So these guys, oh, they do all their own fundraising raising. There's lots and lots more I could say. The only thing they've ever asked of us is if we pay the insurance for the trail, which is very, very cheap. So other than that, everything that happens out there, trail fix up, new trail signs, repairs, um, we've got the new signs across the street because they were stolen. The one down at the corner in the, at the Senate half, um, are, um, Victoria Cross Award sign, that one's been damaged or stolen. So they're the ones that welcome constantly fixing themselves. So I really commend this group. It's just those great things. Thank you.
Nine point four Fire Truck Update.
Thank you, your worship. I have been in constant communications with infrastructure Ontario on this. I have been still submitting numbers as of earlier this week. For it, they wanted to check our twenty twenty two FIRs, compared them, uh, also request what our budget was for this year. So they're still going over the application on it. And, uh, speaking with the individual actually late this afternoon, he's hoping to have submit his recommendation and later this week. So that's where it's just a time consuming. Well, we had to wait for the budget to be passed and then they have to check the FIRs for from twenty twenty two just to see our revenues and that. So that's what they wanted to verify.
Draft motion be it resolved that council accept the items for council information as presented. A mover and a second there. Counselor Cooper and Counselor Hughes. Okay, any, uh, discussion on the DSAF twenty twenty four Q one? Cobalt Constructed Wetlands Annual Report, Counselor Hughes.
Is that in our package? Because I don't seem to have it.
That was a large document, ninety, uh, and it was submitted electronically.
We didn't want to kill a whole forest.
Okay.
Uh, nine point three Counselor Anderson's Cobalt, uh, Cobalt Historical Society update. Any questions?
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Is that machine available to rent anywhere in the country, the world or the province? A cop movie machine or whatever? Because a lot of them, they do rent some things at home for months or whatever. You might be able to rent it for three or four months.
They, they've been looking into that too. There's enough use of it. There would be enough use of it up here. Uh, they're not a small machine.
Yeah, I imagine they're pretty.
Uh, because you're taking like a, a whole big original newspaper page.
Is there any way you can look into that and see if it's a rental? Quick fundraiser that we could nail a couple thousand bucks for. You know, rent it for a few months to get them started rather than the whole twenty grand. Because, you know, there might be a few donations out there in town that might be interested.
Yeah, they're still working on that, on that because I think the Halleberry Museum is, uh, applying for the, the, the rest of the funding for that. Yeah, um, yeah, it's, it's something that's, uh, yeah, there are others around, but not close here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you could ask them if there's one rentable, because there might be a way to get rented for a couple of months immediately.
I would, if, if I was an organization, I owned one, I wouldn't rent it out. Let's put it that way.
Counselor Starcheck?
Yeah, I said the one question, it was a sign up by, by where we live on Argentite there and Silver Lane, I think it is Silver Lane there. Uh, there was one called Pig Town. It was taken down. I was wondering if they're gonna replace that one or or if it wasn't, or if it was one of the ones that were being updated or something.
Yeah. But that's what it was called out there. Yeah. I'll ask, yeah. Oh, I'm sure they'll be watching tonight, so we'll.
Any questions about the fire truck update?
I just want to inform council that I have been in contact with Chief Hearn every step of the way. So keep him updated as we go along with this, so.
No, no questions.
Oh, is that truck still available?
It still is there. Yeah, I've also been contacting not only with Chief Hearn, but with the manufacturer.
Okay, all in favor? Carrie. Ten bylaws and agreements. Ten point one bylaw twenty twenty four dash sixteen being a deeming bylaw under section fifty four of the Planning Act Staff Report twenty twenty four oh five twenty eight oh three. Draft motion where as section fifty four of the Planning Act enables council to pass a bylaw to deem certain lands a registered plan of subdivision to not be within a plan of subdivision. And whereas the effect of deeming land to no longer be part of a plan of subdivision will have the effect of emerging said lands should they be abutting and in the same ownership. And whereas the owner of the land specified in this bylaw has requested that council deem said lands to no, no, no longer be in the plan of subdivision, knowing the effects of the bylaw on the lands. And whereas council received staff report twenty twenty four oh five twenty eight oh three with the recommendation to approve the deeming bylaw twenty twenty four dash sixteen. Now therefore be it resolved that bylaw twenty twenty four dash sixteen being a deeming bylaw under section fifty dash four of the Planning Act be taken as read a first, second and third time and finally passes twenty eighth day of May twenty twenty four. And further that the said bylaw be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Need a mover and a second there. Counselor Wilcox and Counselor Starcheck, any discussion? All in favor?
Is this just dealing with the guy on Ferland or is this just overall everything?
No, it's just the property on Berlin.
Okay, perfect.
All in favor? Harry. Bylaw twenty twenty, oh, ten point two bylaw twenty twenty four dash twenty one municipal borrowing bylaw staff report twenty twenty four oh five twenty eight oh four. Draft motion whereas council received staff report twenty twenty four oh five twenty eight oh four with the recommendation to adopt bylaw twenty twenty four dash twenty one. Now therefore be it resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty four dash twenty one being a bylaw to authorize municipal line of credit for the year twenty twenty four be taken as read a first, second, and third time this twenty eighth day of May twenty twenty four. And further that said bylaw be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. A mover and a second there. Counselor Hughes, Counselors. Hunter. Any discussion? All in favor? Harry. Eleven unfinished business. There is none. Twelve new business, twelve point one schedule of accounts. Draft motion be it resolved that council receives the following schedules as presented. Schedule number twenty twenty four dash oh eight in the amount of a hundred and forty five thousand six hundred and thirty seven dollars and seventy nine cents. Schedule number twenty twenty four dash oh nine in the amount of a hundred and thirty six thousand one hundred and eighty one dollars and thirty nine cents. A mover and a second there. Counselor Cooper, Counselor Hughes, any discussion or clarification required? Okay, all in favor?
Oh, one quick question. Uh, over in twenty three oh two. We got April Caretaker Services DSAF and April Property Maintenance Cobalt. Do we pay for the caretaker services for the DSAF? It's reimbursed, okay.
You'll notice on a number of them here that involve, uh, the building that you'll see share with. And then there'll be, uh.
Okay, yeah, just didn't, I was looking for that and didn't see that.
Yep, okay. Okay, all in favor? Carrie. Okay, uh, Mayor's Report. Uh, wildfire update. The wildfires dropped in size, classes being held. I've seen them flying over today with their infrareds checking for hotspots. So that's good news. So that's good news. It was a pretty nasty scare on the anniversary of our big fire to have. But just so the public and council is aware, the emergency control group didn't meet on Thursday night to prepare just in case the wind shifted or there was a need to in act our emergency management plan. Which leads me into even though we've had rain and yes, we got a lot of rain, it's still not enough rain because as things are greening, they're pulling moisture from the ground. So anything laying on the ground is still extremely dry, especially in the bush. I know some people are questioning, well, why haven't we lifted the fire ban yet? And that would be why, because we're still being a little cautious. Okay. And I ask the public to respect that there is a fire ban and not to have fires during the fire ban. We had one. And that leads me to on Thursday evening, we will be doing a tabletop exercise with Coleman for emergency management with our emergency management core groups. So wish us luck mostly if we're prepared to avert a catastrophe. And I attended the Jack Monroe documentary on Sunday. It was very, very well done. I was quite impressed. And as Counselor Anderson indicated, after the documentary, they announced the Order of the North Award going to Anne Saunders, who developed the first hospital in Cobalt and came from England. And yeah, in nineteen oh six and also worked tirelessly during the typhoid of that year. So it's nice recognition to get. And that's all I have. And fourteen.
I sent you an email after one of our most recent meetings about.
Oh, sorry, yes, you did. And the response we got, it was refresh my memory, Counselor Wilcox, it's right there.
Municipal Affairs had said we had twenty eight thousand, Steve said we had two hundred and some odd thousand and sewer.
Oh, about using the surplus, yes. If it's earmarked for water and sewer, it cannot be used anywhere else. It has to stay in water and sewer.
So in that case, can I ask how much we have in reserves now? Because I got our budget put in ten thousand. Where are we at?
The number of two hundred and fifty some odd dollars is correct. For under the reserves, that number is correct. It's just how the ministry interprets the FIRs. Because if you stated that the water was, for us, it's, I believe it's surplus, but if you categorize as reserves, then they'll put it into that reserve number. So it's just an interpretation of the numbers at this time. I've confirmed that with our auditor as well. But you cannot use your water reserves for to buy a fire truck. You won't allow that. So that's what they were getting back to me on.
If we have water in the fire truck, wouldn't it count?
That's why a lot of municipalities, when they develop reserves, they develop them for specific things. And that's what they have to stay in the coffers or they can't be used in other areas.
Will you update it on that, like the actual numbers? If they're allocated or whatever, like we're going to get a breakdown of that, right?
Where the reserves are allocated? And I apologize, Counselor Wilcox, I did get the answer for you though. Okay, anything else?
When do we see the accountant? Our accountant, when do we usually have a meeting? Yeah, well, right now we're still in draft mode because of what is called the ARO, Asset Retirement Obligation. And a number of municipalities include ourselves have not done it yet just because of the cost of it. And I do know a few municipalities are having issues even getting the cost together because we were mandated to do the asset management course or program. The ARO is very, very similar, but it's a other one that the ministry is requesting. I've already been in talks with the ministry about this. Why are we doing this kind of twice and for the cost of it? So until we have our ARO done, it's going to be in draft mode. But again, that being said, another number of municipalities are in the same boat we are. I've been actually talking with Coleman Township to see who they are trying to get to do their ARO. And maybe if we could get enough municipality share costs to bring it down. But right now it's almost like we're handcuffed with this ARO right now. And everyone's kind of baffled, even like discussions with the auditors too. It's two very, very similar things, but it's just two different departments are asking.
With the twenty six thousand dollar price tag.
Yeah, that was with one of them I was quoted in, I'm not, I don't want to go down that road at all.
So until the ARO is done or that requirements all the way, our financials have to stay in your route.
Yeah.
Fourteen Closed Meeting Draft Motion be it resolved that council convene in closed session as per section two thirty nine in Municipal Act two thousand and one as amended in order to address the matter pertaining to subsection two A, security of the property of the municipality and local board. Two F, advice that is subject to solicitor client, including communications necessary for the purpose. Two I, a trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial or labor relations information supplied in confidence to the, to the municipality or local board. Remover and a seconder. Counselor Cooper, Counselor Anderson, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Carrie. We won't be returning to video after we come back with the post.